All that would like to join to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, so next item on the agenda is roll call and I'd like to have the clerk secretary note that all commissioners are in attendance and along with student representatives as well. And so the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and we needed to make a couple of late minute changes.
So I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. First, to add a second personnel or a personnel addendum under item B, under the consent agenda that was sent out through email to board members. And then, under communications, there will be a communication that we received from David Wach and also from the Vermont School Boards Association. And then, under central office reports, Bill Olson will give a graduation update before he does the summer hiring protocol. And I believe that's all of the amendments to the agenda.
No, there's the nutrition one, the food service.
Oh, the food service, yes, and that is.
Under the consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda. That's the food service that you received, it's just the update for the food service for next year, extending the contract.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to add those items to the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those no? Okay, since there's consensus, the motion passes. So the next item would be our consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the previous meeting, personnel memo 611, and the addendum, and acceptance of the idea B, rants, and the food service selection. So, all those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the motion unanimously carries, thank you. And the next item on the agenda is approval of bids, and there's a computer purchase bid for RCPS.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a bid for the purchase of 77 HP EL books, laptops, in the amount of $72,688.
Okay, Hurley has made a motion on the computer purchases, is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, so the next part of our agenda is communications, and first of all, I'd like to recognize Haley, who, I don't, I don't know if Haley hopped on here, our outgoing student representative.
I think she's an attendee.
Okay, so we want to thank Haley for her service of the board the last couple of years, and, you know, keeping us in the loop with what's going on, on the ground in the schools, and we wish her well in her next adventure and endeavors, and Betty and Sheri from the central office will be coordinating, getting your token gift to you, so, you know, round of applause for Haley, really thank her very much for her service the last couple of years. Great, okay, and then, so, I'd also like to welcome new student representatives, so Isabella LaFemina is on the line here, she'll be the incoming junior representative to the school board, so welcome to Isabella, and we look forward to having you and working with you over the next couple of years, and of course Hannah Salamano is stuck with us again for another year, and we appreciate her service and again, look forward to the next year. Thank you to all the students for participating. And then, let's see, so, I am going to turn the communications over to Clerk Pensak, and we have what she mentioned, the VSBA statement condemning systemic racism, it was a joint effort between the School Board Association, the Superintendent Association, and the Principal Association, and so she's going to read that out, and as she mentioned, also a statement from our outgoing interim superintendent, Wach, so Commissioner Pentak?
Okay, so we received this from the Vermont School Boards Association, the Vermont Superintendents Association, and the Vermont Principals Association, and it was dated June 2nd, 2020, and it says that the Vermont School Boards Association, the Vermont Superintendent's Association, and the Vermont Principals Association strongly condemn the systematic violence, societal marginalization, and oppression that has been put upon Black, Indigenous, and people of color since the founding of this country. Our associations condemn the recent killings of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, and Breonna Taylor, and believe that these murders affirm the need for nationwide action to end systemic racial violence. These most recent atrocities point to a much larger implicit and explicit marginalizing that is not new or isolated to law enforcement. As leaders of Vermont's education systems, we recognize that public education in general, and public education in Vermont, is not immune to systemic oppression and racism. In Vermont schools, there is evidence that students of color are disproportionately subjected to exclusionary discipline, receive less educational opportunity and experience, and experience curriculum that is not representative of their culture, and does not do justice to the persecution of their forbears throughout the course of American history. As leaders of Vermont's education systems, we have a duty to recognize and address our biases and engage in necessary conversations about Vermont schools' complicity in systemic racism. We have a duty to support and stand with our faculty, staff, and students of color. We have a duty to prepare our students to confront injustice, participate in civil discourse, and participate in the ongoing effort to truly realize liberty and justice for all. In January of 2018, our associations adopted a working definition of educational equity. Educational equity means that each student receives the resources and educational opportunities they need to learn and thrive. Equity means that a student's success is not predicted or predetermined by characteristics such as race, ethnicity, religion, family economics, class, geography, disability, language, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, or initial proficiencies. Equity means that every school provides high-quality curriculum, programs, teachers, and administrators, extracurricular activities, and support services. Equity goes beyond formal equality where all students are treated the same. Achieving equity may require an unequal distribution of resources and services. Equity involves disrupting inequitable practices, acknowledging biases, employing practices that reflect the reality that all students will learn, and creating inclusive multicultural school environments for adults and children. This definition, along with the equity ethos of each of our association's mission statements, calls us to build upon our recent efforts and to do more and to do better going forward. Over the past several years, our associations have taken steps to more fully realize the implicit and explicit biases within our organizations and schools, and provide anti-racist professional learning opportunities for our members. We collectively recognize the need for our associations to do more to advance this work and to center the importance of anti-racism and equity in our processes, collaboration, and leadership. Our efforts must grow and continue, therefore, we commit to the following concrete actions. All employees of our associations will participate in ongoing implicit bias, equity, and diversity training. We will promote and support implicit bias training for all faculty and staff in Vermont Public Schools, including athletic and co-curricular personnel and officials across the state. We will offer and promote professional learning for school leaders and school board members that include, but will not be limited to equity literacy, curriculum audits, review protocols for examining bias in school policies and procedures, culturally responsive instruction and school culture, student leadership and voice, and examining power and privilege in schools. Instances of violent deaths suffered at the hands of racism are always reprehensible. We are lifted by the hope that large numbers of previously unaware or unaffected members of our communities will recognize our shared responsibility in taking an active role in anti-bias, anti-racism action for a more equitable, just, and safe place for all of our students to grow and to thrive. So that is that statement from the Vermont School Board Association, the Superintendent's Association, and the Principals Association. And then, we received a statement or a note from David Wach, our outgoing interim superintendent, to whom we're very grateful, and it says, although I won't be attending the meeting Tuesday night, and my time here in Rutland, in the Rutland region is up, I would like you to read the following short statement. I want to reiterate my strong support of Rutland High School principal and soon-to-be superintendent Bill Olson's wise recommendations regarding our next steps for social justice initiatives in the Rutland City Schools. This includes listening to the voices of Rutland High School students and staff, and continuing to fly the Black Lives Matter flag in some appropriate venue at the school, along with many other ways that have been contemplated to highlight and showcase systemic racism and the need for significant reforms. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Joanne. So the last part of communications is the opportunity for public comment, and this is for items that are not on the agenda at this time, so later on in the agenda will be the graduation update, and then later after that will be the new neighbors report, including the plans for the Black Lives Matter flag, so anyone wanting to speak on those would be later in the meeting, so there is a question and answer section if any of the attendees have any comment or questions at this point in the meeting. And I guess with the delay kind of with technology and stuff, if things come up, we will do our best to answer them as, as the meeting goes on, so in light of not seeing anything in the question and answer currently, we will move on with the agenda, and, but we will be monitoring those. So the next part of the agenda is school and program updates, and we'll start off with the student representative report, and so Hannah and Isabelle, I would return it over to you.
I wanted to say congratulations to Isabella LaFemina on becoming the new junior school board representative, and the best of luck to Haley next year. At Rowland High School, students are finishing up courses and exams. The senior awards night is June 10th, and the graduation video release is June 11th. The graduation walk to pick up diplomas is June 18th and 19th. That's all I have.
Thank you, Hannah, and I, I don't expect you to have anything, Isabelle, since you're just being welcomed, so, but if you do, shout it out. So the next part on the agenda is a learning opportunities update, and I will turn that over to Pam Reed.
Hey, everybody, thanks so much. So you might remember, way back in January, I shared with you the direction that the district was taking towards expanding the learning opportunities for Rutland City Public School students. Specifically, I had shared with you the needs to better meet the students who struggle with behavioral regulation and social emotional development, so my purpose tonight is to give you an update on where we are with our development of programs and services to better meet the needs of the students. So for our primary and early intermediate school students, we have developed a program that will be located at the Peer Point Learning Center, that's the building across from Northwest Primary. The building has been the site for our collaborative classrooms with Head Start for the last few years. The size of the building is ideal for a program for children who have struggled to find success in the traditional school building, even though they've had therapeutic support and interventions. As far as our progress, we've had meetings with specific students' families to talk about the program. We've hired a general education teacher and a counselor for the program, and identified a modest number of parent educators that have been assigned to the program in accordance with individual student needs. We've identified a therapeutic case manager from Rutland Mental Health that will support our children and their families. A portion of Jess Henderson's responsibilities next year will be to provide administrative oversight for the program. She's hit the ground running with securing staff and working with Michael Derbionik for some building modifications. Further planning of the daily structure and schedule will occur over the summer months. So with that move to Peer Point, you might be wondering, gee, what about our collaboration with Head Start and where are they headed? So both of our primary buildings will include a Head Start collaborative classroom in the fall. This is a successful model that was in place prior to them moving into the Peer Point Primary Building. We're currently working closely with Head Start staff to move materials and address licensing and logistical details of the move. Another expansion that we had talked about back in January was that of our Allen Street Campus, who at the time was serving students in grades seven through 12. Throughout the school year, Scott and his team have modified space and staffing patterns and curriculum to include students in grades five and six. During the winter months, we began transitioning younger students to Allen Street Campus. I think that it's important to note that the use of grant funds and by shifting staff and resources, the expansions that you've heard about, as well as the one that Patty's going to talk about in a little bit, are budget neutral, meaning that they're not requiring new local funds to support. So before we move forward and talk about the Rutland Middle School, school within a school, do you have any questions about the therapeutic programs?
I do.
Go ahead.
So if you can give us a bit of numbers of how many students are we looking at for each kind of group, and would that also change the models that are being implemented right now in the elementary level K-2-6 in terms of the therapeutic classrooms that have been already existing within the schools, or any of the models of the multi-tier?
System of support.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sure, so yeah, we will continue to have the therapeutic or multi-age classrooms within the buildings, as that's part of our continuum of placements, and we have a number of kids that are successful, and that, having the program right in the school allows for flexibility throughout the day, so kids can spend time in a therapeutic program and in the classroom, depending on their individual needs, so this is an expansion for kids that even, even with those supports and services within the school have continued to struggle. Right now, we've identified nine to 10 kids for the Peer Point Program, we have added seven students to Allen Street Campus, but other kids have transitioned out of Allen Street, so our numbers have stayed about the same with 30 kids, a little, between 27 and 30 kids at Allen Street total, grades five through 12.
What, can I, is that okay if I ask one more?
Sure.
When we were talking about it, and I may be confused with kind of the timeline and stuff like that, when we were talking about it in, over the winter, I think there was also a discussion about potentially that the new expansion will allow to place students that have been placed outside our district and bring them kind of back to the district, is that something that we're looking at, or is it, am I, am I completely off target?
No, you're not off target at all, so we only have a couple of kids that are in out-of-district placements right now, they're finding success, and so just while we start the program, I think it's important that they continue that, that rate of success with hopes that they would be able to come back to our, our traditional programs quicker. However, we have been able to avoid sending several students to out-of-district placements because we've developed the program.
And would there be like any flex, looking at like the kids that are at Peer Point or Allen Street expansion of how they are going to possibly be successful enough to then transition back to the regular buildings?
Yeah, so we, when a student moves to an out-of, out-of-school placement, we always talk about what goals students have and what goals they need to achieve in order to come back or back into the setting. Allen Street has had a couple of kids successfully transitioned back into the school setting this year, so that's always a part of our conversation. I did a thorough look at the behavioral data for our students at Allen Street Campus this year, and the growth has been quite profound on the decreasing the number of students with major behaviors throughout the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions about therapeutic programs? I don't see you're hearing.
Taking up the next topic too, Pam?
Yeah, I'm going to kick off, Patty, this winter Patty, Beaumont, had shared with you a plan to develop a school within a school for Rutland Mental, or for Rutland Middle Schools students, I'm going to pass the torch to Patty and to her team, so that she can give you an update on their progress.
So thank you so much, Pam, and thank you so much to the school board, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the screen while I'm doing this, so thanks so much to all the school board members for providing us an opportunity to again, come to you and kind of share in a little bit more detail, our school within a school, which we are going to call our Bridges Program, hence that slide. I also want to thank Pam for all the support, knowing the importance of having innovative learning opportunities for all of our students, particularly in my case, for the middle school, so, and Erica Walstrom and I are the two individuals who kind of have developed this, Erica's going to man the slideshow for us, and the two of us will go back and forth talking. So I also want to thank Dave Wach for allowing us to persevere in our efforts, because he really was a wonderful support through this whole, through the inception of this whole idea, and to what we have today to present. So this idea began because we have a population of students who felt disenfranchised and didn't engage, they didn't feel like a part of our school community. So you might ask, who are these students? Well, if you can for a minute, imagine the student who arrives to school late, like every day, or maybe way too early, the kid who constantly skips class, or the kid who interrupts class constantly, but regardless of how many times you ask that child to leave, they stay in class, or the kid who's screaming obscenities in the hallway, and then the opposite, the kid who won't talk to you when you're in the hallway, no matter how much you try to engage. So that's who we imagined as we designed the Bridges Program. For them, every day is Groundhog Day, and that's pretty, pretty interesting right now. This is the cycle that we're looking to break.
So when Patty presented back in January, our name was SWAS, a school within a school, and that was just sort of a holding name as we created the program, and since then, we've come up with Bridges as the name, and it really came out of the idea of a metaphor in the fact that bridges are things that connect, they connect borders, like the Crown Point Bridge that you're looking at right here, connecting people from New York to Vermont, they take us over impassable areas like water or train tracks or things like that, so if you think about our program, what we're really trying to do is bridge those middle years, which I'm sure many of you remember as being maybe a bit uncomfortable and awkward at times, and so how can we help students transition through this time in a, in a really meaningful and powerful way? We're trying to put in place structures that will help students be able to navigate challenges that they may have experienced in education and in learning, and so that they can proceed onward to their next education level, their next endeavor, and, and becoming productive citizens. So that was the metaphor, and then the acronym came from that, and we really looked at what are the goals of our program, and so we want to build resilient, interested, determined, growing, and engaged students, and that's, that's the premise for the Bridges Program.
So as we were talking about this, Erica introduced this book to me by Carla Shalaby, which is Troublemakers: Lessons in Freedom from Young Children, and this is obviously an excerpt from that. If you haven't read it, I would suggest that you put that on your list of reads, it's, it's very interesting, and so we took from that this notion of the canary in the coal mine. Although we had a particular criteria in mind for our students as we first thought of the Bridges Program, we realized that like the canary in the coal mine, these are the kids who are most susceptible to the rigidity of our traditional school system. They're the students that we need to wrap around the most in the present, but they're also the students who teach us as educators those really important lessons on the best educational practices and programs for all students.
So we see the Bridges as a program that would really benefit all learners, in that it's, it's best practices and it's innovative and engaging, however, the ones that are going to most benefit from it are the ones that are struggling learners at Rutland Middle School, and so we want to kind of help you walk through who we sort of envision as these struggling learners, because Bridges is not meant for every student, the district already has many systems of support in place for learners with challenges. So this table, I'm just going to walk us through, kind of outlines that, that fine line of the students that we're thinking about that would really benefit from this Bridges Program. So it's a student who would struggle to follow accepted social norms, but, you know, under guidance and with teacher direction, they would be capable of appropriate behavior when participating in programs in our community throughout Rutland. It's the student that might struggle academically, but students or teachers would see them as like, oh man, they have so much potential, they're just kind of not reaching that, but they are interested in their personal growth and they want to improve, so they are still invested in learning. They might struggle to engage in the learning process, but they are ready to engage, they're the ones that ask questions in the hallways and are excited when projects happen or guest speakers come in, and they, they are able and capable and ready to engage in their learning. They are the students that struggle with the scale and the scope and the structure of the school day, but they're open to smaller learning environment, and we've seen this actually in the sort of remote learning, there are many students that are, are really actually thriving when they are taken out of those social, the stressful social situations. They are students that might struggle with the structure of the day, they have other obligations, maybe siblings in the morning, or they're helping family members at home at different times, but they're able to adapt to changes in daily routine, so Bridges would be going out into the community some days, we would be working in the classroom other days, if you're working on projects, they need to be able to kind of go with the flow and be able to adjust to those, those changes. They might be a student that actually finishes work really quickly and becomes kind of bored in your regular regular classroom. And so, they need that individual, individualized challenge and the variety and the ability to go in new directions and new pathways.
So, we envision an innovative educational program untethered to the traditional schedule that focuses on connecting students with real-world learning opportunities in the greater Rutland area using integrated units of study. And to this end, we designed some guiding principles. So, those pertain to equity, personalization, and community. First, regarding equity, we want to address inequities to support all students. We want them to obtain academic and social success. That's why they're in school. It's very important to us. Secondly, personalization, if we think about Act 77, the personalized learning portion of that, that act, making deliberate connections with individual students readiness, interests, and passions is part of what the state has put forward to us. And I think that that, those PLPs, personalized learning plans, that our students have started to develop over the last few years can be the guiding document for all Bridges students to be able to house the work that they do. And then lastly, community, the small size would promote those strong connections, more like a family connection between the learners, the educators, and then the greater Rutland community. And we're looking at a ratio of about one adult to 10 students, to ensure that small size continues.
So, when we were putting this together, we really decided we just want to acknowledge the elephant in the room, or at least our perceived elephant in the room. And that would be the fact that education, especially right now, is in, in flux. And there are so many things that are uncertain and that change on a daily basis, if not an hourly basis. And so, it's hard to really say exactly the logistics, the specifics, and that rollout. But we also see this moment as, as really this, this tipping point, this place where our educators and our students have been pushed into new learning and thinking about things in alternative ways, having hybrid experiences, both remotely and in person. And so, we see this as a great opportunity to think about how we structure the faculty and the students and our space at Rutland Middle School, to really build a program that's innovative and inclusive and provides opportunities for, for all of our learners. So, with that in mind, we recognize that it's really a challenge, but it's, it's an endeavor that we really believe is, is worth pursuing, because the benefits are really, they're, they're great. The potential for this program is huge. And it's going to benefit our students, all of our students, but especially our canaries that need our support the most. And so, it's too important not to pursue. So, with that, we would welcome any questions.
Any questions?
Kevin?
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to, okay. How many, how many students are we expecting in this program? And, and what kind of faculty ratio are we talking about?
So, we had talked about 20 students as being the, the kind of top number. We, at first, we'd hoped to have 10 students Kevin, so we'd have one adult with 10 students, or one adult starting with 10 students, and then eventually two adults with 20 students. So, that's that 1 to 10 ratio that I talked about. Because we would be starting this later than we anticipated, and we were looking at grant funding for one of the adults, because we would have a teacher who was a humanities teacher and a teacher who is a STEAM teacher. So, one teacher would come from within our teaching pool right now at Rutland Middle School, and then one would be hired through a grant, grant monies that we'd already kind of tagged for that. So, I think that answers your question.
Okay. Are there any other, like, parent educator level people in the classroom, or is it just that one teacher with 10 students?
Well, last year, we had looked at having a parent educator, because we had somebody on, in our staff who could take, take that position, because they're regular education dollars. These wouldn't be special education dollars. Right now, we don't really have that, but I think that we could creatively figure out a way to utilize a couple of our parent educators. One, I think, still does have regular ed dollars associated with them. So, or we could also look at some of our unified arts teachers and see if we could creatively utilize their talents to help support us as we look at those integrated projects that we would be working on.
I'm just thinking that if you run into a crisis with one student, it's difficult if there's only one adult in the room, and, you know, you have to stop everything for that student, and the others are unattended, or anyway.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely correct. And so, at this point in time, having the two adults with whatever number we have of students would probably be the preferable number, because obviously, we would be taking students offsite. So, that would be necessary.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a question. First of all, there was a little moment where we couldn't, we had a problem with unmuting, unmuting ourselves. I have a question about how, is there any thought, you know, I know, it sounds really exciting and kind of new and needed and all of the good things. Is there any thought about how we going to track the success, or if we're talking about the middle school in relationship to how kids then transition to high school, or kind of things that we have been tracking all along, readiness and ability to transition into the high school programs, or anything like that? Any type of oversight into how the program is doing?
Absolutely. Not only would we have the typical student reflections and those kind of things, but we would still have students taking their benchmark assessments as they would be, you know, as kind of students in the regular curriculum, if you will. We also would still have assessments. The teachers would have assessments for those students in the STEM, STEAM, or humanities areas. It's just those assessments would be project-based assessments. But those are all developed through the standards that we teach all students at Rutland Middle School.
I think another piece of data too, that we would look at and could look at would be attendance and, you know, behavior sort of referral type data as well.
Thank you.
So, I had a question. Is, is it designed to be fluid through, might be in one regular classroom setting for one subject, and overarching support? Just if you might be able to clarify that.
That could potentially happen, yes, for sure. We're really looking though, if you think about the model of project-based learning, you, you want to focus on one, one unit of study that you're doing at a time. So, it wouldn't be really like taking a class separate from that. It would be, how do we work with classroom teachers to help support the learning that's going on in the Bridges program? So, their planning could still, teacher planning could still happen with the teams, the teacher teams that is, will be occurring next year. Does that make sense?
I think so.
But there could be also like skill development that needs to continue with students. So, they could be doing some intervention programs and those kind of things that would help to support either their reading strength, or their writing, or their mathematics, that type of thing, to ensure that they're, for a number of those students that I can think of right now that would be really successful in this type of a program, they would, they would benefit from those intervention programs.
Thank you.
We've also, I don't know if this was what you were asking exactly, but we've also talked about students being able to enter into Bridges, and then also, you know, exit, or like, once you commit, you don't have to commit as a seventh grader and say that you're gonna stay all the way to the end. You might, you might decide, okay, I want to go back to the traditional classroom, my eighth grade year, or maybe an eighth grader decides, okay, now I'm ready, I'd like to try Bridges out. So, there would be some fluidity that way as well.
But the full curriculum would be administered through Bridges or transitioned out?
But the, the curriculum also would match, the way that standards are being taught would be, would match what the seventh, eighth grader is doing, so that they wouldn't, they wouldn't have gaps there.
Right.
Right, but it'd be administered by the Bridges program?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Charlene?
Sorry if you already mentioned this, but is this Bridges program for seventh through 12?
Right now, it's a seventh and eighth that we're looking at. We talked quite a bit about having a seven, eight, nine program. You know, that, I think that I would really like to see that happen. So, I'd love to see us be able to push that up as time goes on. It's just been a little, it's taken a little bit more time to develop the seventh and eighth grade program, which obviously is easier in one building, you know, as opposed to having two buildings that you have to cross over. But I do see that happening at some point in time. And if you remember Charlene from our first conversation, it was going to be outside of the Rutland Middle School building. And at this point in time, because of a lot of just challenges in our society, basically, we'd, we'd like to stand it in the building, because we have control over that, and we don't really have control over the other sites right now, nor the financial, the ability to financially commit to that kind of thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I have one more question?
Sure. Dina?
And I'm not sure if you touched on it, as I was trying to figure, technology is very distracting.
Yeah, it is.
To some of, to some brains. So, how, how are we, how is the program going to determine who will participate? Is it based on the teacher's feedback or assessments, or based on the kind of like, thinking of Grove Street campus that is more kind of like a voluntary type of thing, where the student have to want to participate? And then, as, just a comment, and it has no reflection to, specific to this program or to our schools, but in general, I get a little, I get a little concerned when, when there's the, the grouping type of programs that are happening, just because we are now looking at our biases and kind of understanding our non-intentional stuff. But still, when we create systems, we have to, I think, be very good about being on top of those, because as the systems evolve, and we, we move further along away from where we're at right now, and personnel changes or whatever, the intention of something may not be the actual representation of it on the ground. And that sometimes worries me when there's that separation type of programs that we're looking at right now. So, more of a comment has nothing to do with kind of what you guys are presenting right now, but something that I would add to, and to kind of keep track of in some way, if it's possible.
Well, I, I know it's not a question, but if I might just comment, Dina, I think that's exactly one of the reasons why we wanted a program like this, because it would be all-inclusive of those students who wanted it. So, yes, you're right. It is a choice program. Middle school students, it's incredibly important that they are not pigeonholed into a program that they don't want to be in, because they won't be successful at it. And that's, the idea is that they have in fact been pigeonholed into something, because we have what, what to offer, seventh grade, correct, or eighth grade. So, this is a way of looking at it a little bit differently and offering a different opportunity to those students who, obviously, we might be saying to them, hey, look, you know, you spend a lot of time in the hallway, could we talk to you about this program? Maybe it's something that will spark your interest, and you would like to be part of this. So, that's exactly what we're looking to create here.
I would also add to the, it's not, by having it in Rutland Middle School, those students can still be a part of the Rutland, the Rutland Middle School community. So, it's not like, oh, you're, you're in this other program that's separate. So, whenever we gather for assemblies or celebrations, you know, even lunch cafeteria, they would still be able to socialize and connect with their peers. So, that transition in and out of the program would be a lot easier for the students as well, in that social realm, as well as the academic realm.
Thank you, guys.
Any other questions? I don't see any board members with their hands.
Allison.
Yeah.
I have one, my video, sorry guys, the sun, anyway. Tough, tough problem. A couple of things on it. What I, what I do like to see with the middle school especially is to have an alternative program that allows those kids to really kind of express themselves that may, may find them on a lost track. I, I do find that a program like this would be, would be beneficial. I, what I would like to see, and I know that you had talked about it, and it's really more of a comment, about bringing that seventh and eighth into the ninth grade, where you have that transition, you know, maybe they can carry on to Stafford, you know, and kind of see that path forward, and having, having them stay within the building. You know, being, being as alternative students in the way that they learn, to give them those options going forward. So, I really appreciate the, the work that you guys have done. I think it's a good alternative, especially for our middle schoolers who may be struggling and, you know, may come in from the outside already being lost in the hallways and need something to kind of find their way. And this might be an opportunity for them to find their home within the middle school.
Agree.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anyone else? Not seeing anything. So, thank you Patty and Erica for the presentation.
Thank you Allison, we appreciate it.
Thanks. So, we'll move on to central office reports. So, I will turn it over to Bill Olson. He'll give us a graduation update. And I don't know how to refer to you, Bill. Is there a superintendent-principal combination word, since you're wearing both hats now? So, anyways, I'll turn it over to you, Bill.
Just plain Bill. Before Patty leaves, can Allison, can I make two, one small announcement, one medium-sized announcement, and then I'll get to those points.
Yours.
The, the small announcement that is significant is Patty informed me a week or two ago, I think Patty, that one of our teachers in the middle school, Katie Gino, who's been at the middle school, I think for maybe I'd say 12, 13, 14 years.
Yeah, somewhere.
She was recognized recently by the Vermont Association of Middle Level Educators with the award of the Master of Middle Level Educator Award for 2020. So, I wanted to congratulate Katie. She's a great, great teacher. I wish she was actually here, and if we were all in the board meeting, we could really give her a round of applause. That's a really nice, nice award. So, congrats to Katie. I also wanted to let, yeah, she's, she's fantastic. I wanted to let the board know that when Erica talked about the elephant in the room, the elephant in the room is what's happening next year, and how we're gonna work through that. And so, just to let you know that, or keep you updated, we have a group of about, I think, 22 people or so, district administrators, building principals, a nurse, Michael Derivianik, and I'm missing some other, another person or so, oh, Mike, Mike Norman, all talking about how we're trying, going teachers, right, how we're trying to pull this all together for next year. Other states are trying to forge plans, and I don't know if we have clarity from Vermont about how the expectation for things will look next year. So, we've been researching other states' plans, or what, at least what their principles are for going into learning next year. We're considering three different scenarios. If we were fully remote for some reason, like we are right now, if we were fully in person in the building, and then if we were in some, some kind of hybrid setting, which I think all three of those possibly are, are out there for us to run into next, next fall. So, we're trying to think about all the different contingencies for that. Talking about things like, how do we, how do we instruct, what the daily structure looks like? what the daily structure looks like, operations, health and welfare, and how we deal with technology. So you've heard us talk about this before, but I just wanted to kind of fill you in that that conversation is going on. We don't have the answers yet, but we're getting together a good, kind of a group think about how things should work. Allison, do you want me to go to summer hiring protocol now? Does that make sense?
Um, we can do that after.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the board wanted me to give an update on graduation and what we're doing. And I think I talked about some of this before, so I don't want to bore you with repetition. But, you know, what we've talked about, when we went into school shutdown in the middle of March, it became pretty apparent pretty quickly that we were going to have a situation with graduation. How do we deal with that? And so we tried to plan ahead. I think we had a good foresight to see that we would be in a tough situation like we are now. And we said, what are other schools doing? How are they addressing this? How are colleges addressing this? And we tried to follow the model that was out there around the country. And I see a lot of high schools doing this and all of not most, or most if not all colleges are doing the same thing, where we created a virtual ceremony. We hired a videographer for it to really recreate step by step what the ceremony looks like. So they filmed speeches, they put in different components to bring in personality to the event. We have an hour-long graduation ceremony that will be shown on Thursday night at the time that graduation would have happened live. That will be 6 o'clock, 6:00 PM, and it will be on PEG TV that is now channel 1095 and also on our website. So that was our approach to this. We also tried to, I think I might have mentioned last month, we tried to raise the spirits of the kids. We purchased their caps and gowns, which is not our usual practice. We got lawn signs. And I want to thank Mark Foley especially for giving us access to his, some of, two of his buildings downtown. We just last week installed two big banners downtown congratulating the graduates of Rowland High School and MSJ. So that was kind of the process that we went through. Our real concern when we decided anything was we want to make sure that health and safety of everybody involved was considered. We were really worried about community spread and what any kind of event would set us up for. We did not want anybody to get sick. So we were considering not just our kids, but our staff, family members. And the other thing we were considering with any event that we had was we didn't want to have anything that we ran that would exclude any student. So we had talked earlier about the possibility of running a parade, but we were worried about the before and after our parade and even in the during of the parade where we might possibly put a kid in a situation where they get sick or a family member where they get sick. We were also worried about the equity issue of either I, maybe I don't have a car that I can use and/or maybe for some reason I can't participate in that event. We also were trying to consider, we have a number of kids who would be compromised pretty easily if the virus was spreading. So we never wanted to make sure, we wanted to make sure that any student would not be put in a position where they had to make a decision to either participate in this graduation event or risk getting sick. We just didn't want to have that happen. So that was our thought process through the whole thing. And our idea ultimately though was also to celebrate our seniors and all the hard work that they did. We understand there certainly is a loss. It's hard to lose these things. But, you know, it's the situation that we're in right now, and I think we've tried to make the best of it. And I find that the students that we've talked to have been really good about really sacrificing some of what they would have achieved for the health and safety of the community. And on May 28th, the AOE guidance changed a bit and they said that the, it kind of, I personally feel like it was sort of a hard to understand message. They encouraged in-person events up to 25 people. And so we thought that just really wouldn't work for us. I don't know how we could have managed to even create an event that would be up to that number without, you know, trying to include everybody that we need to include. So we did follow, we looked at what MSJ did something like this, and Burlington High School did something like this where they are allowing for, Burlington High School allowed for a diploma pickup. And we're going to create a stage in front of the high school next week on the 18th and 19th. We've scheduled students into different time slots through those two days, and they'll be able to come up, you know, one car per family, come up, have a chance to walk across the stage, receive their diploma. We have a photographer working for us who will take a picture for them, and they'll have that opportunity to, you know, have pictures taken. It's not quite the same, but it's something that I think, we think aligns with our goal of trying to make sure everybody's safe while celebrating. So I think that's kind of it. I hope that people will watch tomorrow night. We have an awards ceremony that's also on PEG TV. That's channel 1095 again. That's at 7:00. We've taped that already and that's ready to go. And then again, Thursday is the graduation ceremony, which will be at 6:00 on PEG TV. And I want to congratulate again Maya Sobel and Matt Creed, who are our two student honor speakers. We have a competitive process for that. And they were the ones who, the group chose to speak for us. And I also want to thank our commencement speaker, which is Stephanie Schaefer, who has given a fantastic speech. I hope you watched that and it's very moving. So that's my report.
Thank you, Bill. So first off, I'm going to open up the floor to board members with questions. I know we have some information on the question and answer from community members, and the clerk will read those out and we'll respond to those after. But first, we will start with the board. So I believe it's hot. Brittany's hand up?
Yeah, Bill, just one question. If we can have a drive-in and get the diplomas, why can't we have a parade?
Brittany, we talked to the police about that and they, we and they were worried about the before the parade where people are all together, the after the parade where people are all together, and even the during where people might be on the streets. And we felt that that was not good of us to create a situation where we would be presenting three different scenarios or three different settings where we possibly are putting people at risk. So that was our logic.
Okay, I just, I see a little bit of a struggle there because if we're handing out diplomas, kids are going to be having parents out and people are going to be wanting to be involved in that, where I could see that people want to take pictures and whatnot. If you had a graduate, if you had a parade for kids, you may only have one car. I'm a little taken back at the fact that we can have the rally, which is totally something we should do in support. And yet, we can't have a parade to allow the kids to be in their cars to kind of go around. So I'm a little bit, I can see where I got some pushback from parents with respect, absolutely. They were right on that that might be, that might be something that we should kind of look at. If the police is willing to do that type of diploma pickup versus a parade where kids are literally going to be in their cars, we might want to think about that.
Could I describe the diploma pickup just to be clearer and show the difference? And you mentioned the protest. The protest wasn't our event and that, you know, that was, we had really nothing to do with that. So I can't speak to how that was set up.
Was, did they go to the grounds though? I did hear that.
Yeah, they did come on, they went to the flagpole, right?
They did. And did they have, did we know that? Did we have a waiver for that? For liability purposes?
For what purposes, sorry?
For a liability purpose.
A liability. I don't know. We weren't contacted about that. So I don't, that's had nothing to do with us and I don't know how they set it up.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and just so you maybe see the difference, and we've, really Greg has, Greg and Rebecca Basely have scheduled out every, I think, every hour, I think we have every three minutes, people coming through to do this diploma pickup. So they spaced it out over two straight days. I think we're going to be very strict about one car. You can't get out of the car if you're a family member. Only the student can get out of the car. If you get on, get on the internet and check out how they did it at Burlington High School, it's really just one person walking up. There's no touching, there's masks. They pick up the diploma, they get back in the car, or they take a picture, they get back in the car, and that's it. So we think it's a pretty safe event. It's slightly riskier than just a video, but it's less risky than a parade.
Okay, any other board members have any questions or comments? Joanne?
My only comment was that I was really concerned at the protest because I know most people seem to be wearing masks, but they really weren't social distancing. And I would be worried about that in any public gathering. So I don't know that we should use them as our example. But Brittany, I get what you're saying, and I certainly also get what the parents are saying as well. But I'm worried about a spike in, you know, what they have up in Winuski. I'd be very worried about that coming here.
Right, and I totally understand. And I guess too, with the Black Lives Matter, if anybody knew that it was going to be on the grounds and then we didn't get a waiver, so now we've opened us, we've opened up ourselves up already prior to allowing graduates who are actually graduating from the high school. And please know that I am all for, I was just in San Francisco and partook in demonstration. So I am very much so in support of that. But if we can't allow our school's graduates to get together, and yet, we may have known, and I don't know this, but that they came onto the grounds, now we're liable regardless because it comes back to where it was located and the location would have been on the grounds and we didn't have a waiver for that. So there's two issues in my statement on that. There's two issues of we had them on property, there was no waiver done, and we can allow them to get together, but we can't allow the 2020 graduates to be in their cars with masks on to have a parade. That blows my mind. That blows my mind. Because I think we're doing a disservice by saying it's okay for the BML to be in a group on the grounds and have some masks and not have masks, but we can't have our graduates celebrate them by having a parade around town. Think about that, how that looks as if you're a senior in high school or a parent of a senior who may have supported both or didn't support both, however you may see that. But I really think we really need to consider that. Now granted, I will have you know that obviously I was at a distance, clearly I was not in the city of Rutland for the protest, but everything that I saw and everything was done peacefully. It was a very good, it was very well done. But if we knew that they ended up at the high school without permission, we're already liable.
I don't know that we can practice law at this point. Maybe we talk to the lawyer, but I get your point. Let's.
So I'll take back over the floor here. Thank you, Joanne. So I see, I believe Hurley has his hand up, and I'm not sure if you did, Kevin. Okay, I got Hurley and then Kevin. Thank you.
I took a lot of heat about the lawn signs because as I was told by multiple parents that apparently Mill River did their lawn signs with pictures on it. They had it down to Alderman's. Proctor did their lawn signs with pictures. They had them in front of the high school. West Rutland, Fairhaven, all the same. And yet, we didn't do those same, highlighting those graduates along the football field right at Rutland High School where it's highly visible for traffic in doing that. And I did take, that was one issue I took a lot of heat on as a board member because they felt that we were not recognizing them. We recognized Stafford, but we did nothing else at the high school for them.
Okay, and Kevin?
Bill and all of you who are involved, I want to give you credit for taking into consideration all the complicated issues that are involved in this situation, and especially the safety. Because I think in a lot of these public gatherings, the safety is not taken as seriously as it needs to be. I was at the protest and it was not especially well-organized and it was not especially safe. Almost everybody had masks, but social distancing was not happening. And you're right, I don't want to do anything like that. And I agree with you, Bill, that the problem with the parade is not so much the parade, but the gathering beforehand and the gathering after and the organizing of the whole thing. That would be a huge thing to put together. And I just don't think that's realistic. I think we're doing a good job with what we have done. I drove through Pittsford and Brandon the other day, and there are signs along the road of all the graduates. And I'm reading them as I'm driving along and I'm realizing that I'm veering into the other lane. So I'm not sure that the signs along the, or the photos of the graduates along the side of the road is a great idea. I think, I think we've done a pretty good job and I'm really looking forward to the graduation. Thank you.
Okay, any other board members?
Can I just make a quick?
Sure, Dina.
Comment. I think for me, kind of being, hearing from, and we received, I think all of us, pretty good amount of emails over the course of whatever days that this has been going on, and the situation that, you know, is not something that is familiar to any of us really. I just think the take-home message for me would be, and, you know, I appreciate the parents and students voicing their thoughts and beliefs and passion towards what they want to see their kids having. I think this is what we do. This is the process that we have to take, you know? And not everybody agrees on everything. And ultimately, we have the administration has to make the decision of what is the most safe and best case situation for what we have been dealt with, the hands that we've been dealt. I think the take-home message for me, if we can learn something from this, is that maybe get the parents and students more involved in the decision-making and the process and the communication of it. So they, so there's more input and understanding of the rationale behind things and how to include them a little bit better in all of that. As, and I totally understand, as many, many things are in the air at the same time. So this is not pointing any fingers, just kind of like a learning opportunity for moving forward. Because I would think that we will have more curveballs coming at us as we proceed towards the next year and over the summer and all that, so.
Great, thank you, Dina. Ann?
I just wanted to thank Bill and administration. It's a tough position to be in. Appreciate all the input from parents and kids. And I know if it was my kid, I would not want my kid choosing to be compromised or going to their graduation. So I appreciate the way it's being done. I think it's going to be awesome. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Ann. Any other board members? Charlene?
Hi, I also wanted to just kind of put on the record for maybe some parents or students who may be listening. I believe, you know, there is a protocol on how the board handles correspondence that comes to us. So I don't want anyone to feel that if they do not get responses from all the board members that we're not taking your concerns seriously and feel your, your, your thoughts. And so I feel like, I just wanted to get that out there, that we are receiving them, but there are protocols that we would go by and not all of us are going to respond back to the, to each person. Because they didn't hear from us. They might feel like we were sliding them in some way, which is not the case.
Photo bombing cap there. Thank you, Charlene. That is a good, good point. The board communications, the board doesn't actually even have oversight over graduation. That is something that the administration of the building has always overseen. Certainly, these are extraordinary times and a lot has been on their plate. And they have been working hard to make it the best experience. it the best experience for all the students, more equitable. I know it it's hard seeing it compared with other places. Other schools have larger budgets, smaller classes, um different opportunities and, you know, I think the bottom line is, you know, to honor our seniors and to make sure that everyone has the same experience um and is able to participate in the activities without, you know, that might not have the finances or the transportation or particular uh things that other students may have leverage to. Um so I just wanted to, you know, put that out there as well and thank you, Charlene, for bringing that to our attention. And I see Bill has his hand up, so.
Just I want to say something. I just got a message from a parent that said that they cannot see the video, like the the streaming is bl- kind of turned black on them and they cannot hear or see us.
So um I apologize, YouTube just blocked our video and I don't know why. They said there was a violation somehow, so I'm streaming it live on Facebook. I'm moving it to Facebook and you'll be able to watch it there and I do apologize.
So they kind of missed, I think, the whole, what they've, the the item that they've been most of waiting for.
We've got a few new questions in, so people must have been able to still be.
And yeah, they did the question first and then it blocked out like as we as we were explaining.
Okay. So when Charlene was talking, it blacked out?
Uh just before, just a little bit before, a little bit before, I think.
Okay, so I I think, you know, we're okay going on um because Bill had given the update um and Bill had his hand up, so I will hand you the floor, Bill.
Just one, two more quick things. One is that the there is a parade that I guess is being organized by some parents, which is fine. That's that they can do that. I I just want to make clear that's not a s- a school event and it's not part of what we're we're trying to organize. I'm not not against it, but it's just it's that's their their event. And the other thing I was gonna say is, just just to be clear about communications, we we did work with this senior uh student leadership on this and as we were trying to make those decisions and kept them informed all the way through. We emailed the the whole senior class a couple of different times and we also communicated with the parents and all that stuff is still on the the school's front page of the website, if you want to take a look at it, but I I I I agree, trying to try and try to involve as many people as possible is necessary. We did try to communicate as much as we could to try to make sure people understood this is what the state is saying and this is what we feel are safety concerns. So that, just try to be quick with that.
Great, thank you, Bill. Um so I will turn it over to um Joanne as clerk. She is going to read out. I believe we got a couple of comments and maybe a couple of questions.
Okay, so uh the first uh comment comes from Kelly Parker uh who I believe is a Rutland City parent. And she says, I appreciate your efforts, but I wish that there had been better communication, particularly with the parents. So I don't know if someone wants to address that or if you feel it was already addressed, Bill, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, like I just like just said, that those we sent I know for sure, two emails out to the class and and emails out to the parents and that, those those letters are on the school's websites, website. So you could take a look at those if you're you're missing them.
Okay, um the next one is um from also Kelly Parker. And um it is, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to address the board this evening. I just want to take the time to thank Commissioner Brittany Kavakis for getting back to both my son and I when we raised concerns about graduation last week so quickly. Within an hour or so of receiving our email, she responded and got the ball rolling. As a parent who encouraged my son to get involved, I will admit that I was disappointed that he didn't hear back from more of those he emailed. I would also like to thank Deb and Chris Creed, who have been closely following the State Department of Education website and were aware of the changes to the guidance regarding end of the year activities, encouraged many of us to get involved to make our children's graduation a more personal experience. I would like to thank Dawn Marie for designing uh personal signs for our graduates and developing a GoFundMe page so parents and friends could contribute. Maybe you could uh tell us where that is and I would also like to thank Lynn Hemingway for organizing the graduation parade up to honor the class of 2020. Although it was um not organized by the school, it would be nice for it to be included in the graduation announcements to ensure all of our students are aware. Lastly, Rebecca and Mr. Schillinger, who I know have worked to pull together a drive-through graduation next week and anyone else behind the scenes. I think it's important to point out what a strong community we have and if we work together, we can achieve great things, but in order to order to do so, communication and parental involvement is essential. Thank you.
Was that it, Joanne?
No, there's an another one from Kelly Parker and it says, and who opened the gates? Um is that referring to um the protest?
I think that came when Brittany Brittany was talking about them getting waivers. Um and I don't believe we have gates that block off the school from the parking lot entrance. And I don't I think that's where they were. I don't think they were on the field or anything that we do have gated.
Does anybody?
Oh, yeah, I think um she's contacted me. I believe she was talking about, they were told that if they were to bring, if they were to bring that parade into the school, that they would be met there at the gate. So they were wondering, uh this is where that I really had to do some thinking about the Black Lives Matter, how they got into the onto the school grounds and how the parade couldn't go into the school grounds. So um that's where that's coming from, from Kelly.
I think it may go with the use and that school isn't open on
So did we have a use?
So no one was there?
Did we have a use permit for the Black Lives Matter?
Uh not that I know of. It was not, the school didn't sanction it or authorize it, so I don't know how they would.
So then, but we allow, we just.
Okay, I I have a um I have a request from Joseph Anderson who wants to answer this question live.
Oh, okay, good, perfect.
So Bill, could you please elevate, could you please allow Joe Anderson?
Um I accidentally clicked that. I wasn't, I was just reading the question. I did not mean to click to answer live. I'm sorry.
Well, do you want to answer?
Okay, okay, can I just take the floor back? Okay, so I think we have a couple of different issues going on here and I I don't think we necessarily need to pit the protest against graduation. That's, you know, apples to oranges. And um so I think we should return our focus to the graduation and the questions that are on the table for that. So were there any others, Joanne?
Yes, um um there is one from Tammy Pitts and it said the agenda was out for several days that they were going to the school, so you should have known. Oh, but this is a second issue. I also want to thank the Rutland High School parents for pushing for this drive-up graduation because I don't think it would have happened otherwise. Parents have organized our own parade and thanks to one parent, we have a GoFundMe page. Thank God for parents. And I think that is that is everybody.
Okay, so Hurley?
All right, um I think the confusion is, is that I got hit with here the other day that the parents are doing a parade and they were, they were told they would be met by police and not allowed on property. And I think that's where the clarification needs to come in. Um and that's, that's two parents actually set, called me and said that, is that true? We can't go on school grounds if we start the parade. I want to say they're talking at Diamond Run Mall. I don't know. And I told them to go ahead. They need to call the administration. I think that's where the clarification needs to come in about going on school grounds because they were, someone around the way, rumor or whatever, started saying that there was going to be police blocking them from going on school grounds versus be able to go on school grounds. And I guess maybe if Bill can address that, that would clear up a lot of it for the parade.
Thank you, Hurley.
Yeah.
Uh Bill or Greg?
Sure, um what, we have, we were not notified about a parade. I only heard about it through Facebook. Um and I don't have Facebook. I just, you know, people just sent me screenshots. Um we have scheduled on that day uh in a number of different days this week uh drop-off for underclassmen to bring books and uh musical instruments, all that stuff back. So we heard just through Facebook and someone sending, sending a, sending a screenshot that the this parade was going to happen. It was going to start at the mall and it was going to end up at the high school. Um if there was nobody there, it wouldn't have been really my my interest or my business, but since we were, we have people coming in in a really orderly way to try to drop off books and instruments in a safe way, we 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 really have a system for this. I won't, I won't get into all the details of that. We did have our our school resource officer there to make sure, we were going to have them there to make sure that everybody follows what they're supposed to be doing that we, you know, we just don't want people milling around. So when we heard that possibly the parade is going to end at at the high school, Craig spoke with a a number of parents who had come to talk about decorations and said, we we really can't have that happen. That you can't come into the, into, you can't have the parade end at the high school. So that's basically it and I don't know what it turned into. But that's, that's the the story and I don't know if Craig, if you have anything else to add, but that's basically what I, what happened.
Allison, is that okay if I?
Yes, absolutely, Greg. Thank you.
Yeah, um so I I uh some, some uh very thoughtful parents, some of whom I think are attending tonight uh offered to help with the drive-in uh graduations. So Rebecca Badgley and I met with them uh out front. They've been great. They've been really helpful uh and I'm I'm appreciative of all of their efforts. During the course of that conversation, I I did say to them, look, I'm I'm hearing on Facebook uh without, you know, uh without a phone call or anything else that folks are organizing a parade. And what's being announced is that that parade is culminating in a gathering at the high school. Um we've really tried to be really consistent through all of this that gatherings are a bad idea in terms of the recommendations for the health and safety of both our students as well as their families. So during the course of that conversation with those parents, um I said, folks, we're really trying to discourage gatherings and uh uh we're really trying to discourage gatherings. In addition, as Bill mentioned, that's right when we're doing uh picks, pickup and drop-off. At that point, they, I think, you know, already were sort of brainstorming, well, what about Gleason Road, et cetera, et cetera. Um the the reality of of the campus at Rutland High School is, you know, if anybody were to drive by campus, chances are good that right now you would see somebody walking around the track. Um we don't have gates on our, on our campus, so students are on, people are on to and off of our campus throughout the weekend um and during uh outside of school hours. Um in this case, I think the concern that we're really trying to encourage everybody is to avoid gatherings. Um that's been our, that's been our consistent message throughout. So the the drive-through uh graduation walk allows for the the opportunity for the student to kind of have their moment in the sun, you know, for parents and families to have a front row seat, to take pictures and et cetera, et cetera. Um but it's spread out over the course of two days, um over two different sessions. So students will have appointments. Um and again, uh the message has been consistent there that we're really trying to avoid creating situations that are going to result in large gatherings.
Okay, sorry. I am hunting down a charging cord because my laptop's about to die. So um but so I thank everyone, you know, the administration, their their input for that, the the parents for reaching out and helping and making things happen and um, you know, trying to do what we can best for the kids. Um so again, like to thank everyone for their their time, their thoughtfulness and their input in it. Um so, oh, I think someone's telling me, Michael has his hand up?
Yes, if I, if I may.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. If I may, um for any uh parent who wants to have this parade, um I don't, I I really have no input as to the restriction or the approval of that. Um but I would like whoever may or may not be uh planning it to take into account that with the limited access in and out of that campus um and the fact that the school district is still providing food to students throughout the course of this summer. Um my buses will need unfettered access between the times of nine thirty and ten thirty and then again between the hours of twelve thirty and one thirty. So for whoever may or may not be uh deciding that they want to arrange this parade, um if they've not been dissuaded from doing so, please understand that we are attempting to feed uh the underprivileged of the city and we really need to have access during those times.
Great, thank you very much, Michael. Um sorry, did I miss anyone else with this technology and? Okay, so um the next thing on the central office report agenda was summer hiring protocol. Um so I don't know if you want to address that, Bill, or if you just want a motion?
Sorry, Allison. Um yeah, we have um about, I think, if I have my notes right, six more positions that we're we're working through. Um and usually when that happens, be, by the end of the last board meeting, we uh ask for a motion for the superintendent to um hire during the summer months. And those, those people will be hired and then it's approved by, at the first board meeting in August. So we.
I have a motion.
One and. Okay, so uh Dina?
Um a motion to authorize the superintendent to notify the board via email of potential hires during the summer month. If there's no significant objection to the recommended candidate, the position will be hired and filled. The board will ratify such actions at the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Hurley. Um any questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none, um I would like to put the motion to vote. So all those in favor of the summer hiring protocol?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, uh the unanimous motion, so that passes. And Bill, I don't know if you had anything else under central office reports?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you so much. Um so next up are our committee reports and the first one, I'll turn over to Erin for the building committee.
Thanks, Allison. Um so we had a good building committee. Um the minutes are are posted and out there. Um we had some technology issues with communication, but things are well underway and um, you know, Michael and and the team have really, you know, worked hard to make sure we're going to be in in the best standing for any COVID restrictions now and in the future. So that's really fantastic and um yeah, it was all smooth and we're progressing ahead.
Great, thank you, Erin. Um and the other committee that met since our last meeting uh is the policy committee, so I will turn that over to Matt.
Oh, thank you. Um first up, we um just have a a couple of first readings uh for some updated policies. And four members received a memo on that. And I don't know, is there, is a motion necessary to accept the first reading?
You make a motion for the first reading, yes.
Okay, and I entertain a motion to have a first reading for policy number six three four zero uh, which is services or property. And policy number seven six nine seven, which is child nutrition and wellness.
And is there, oh, sorry. There was a second. Charlene, thank you. Uh, did you have a question? Or just second? Okay, so, um, that is the, the first reading. I mean, anyone that has questions or concerns, we could bring that up, up now, but also this will come back before the board for a second reading. Um, so work could be done or communications to the policy committee in the interim as well. Um, so any questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none then. Um, all those in favor of the, uh, the first reading of policy number six three four zero and seven six nine seven? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. So the motion carries and you can review those again and they'll be coming before us at our next meeting. Okay, so then, um, yeah, sorry, Matt.
Oh, we have a couple of the uh, okay. Uh, so a wonderful work that the committee had at the uh, um, Black Lives Matter flag to inform potential work on number three one four zero is flying the flag. Um, Joe Anderson from New Neighbors shared a proposal of the made to administration flock the Black Lives Matter flag during Black History Month each February. Uh, the policy committee was letting to now take a look at policy number three one four zero. Then I ensuring there are specific policy guidelines in place. And then allow administration to develop procedures for decision-making on specific flag display requests.
Okay, thank you, Matt. I think it was a little hard hearing you there. The minutes are available and the discussion you were talking about will be coming before. I'm sorry, Matt. Okay, so, um, next on the agenda is old and new business. Um, so for the first topic there is a school board retreat. Um, it's on there is a school board retreat date, which I actually have not got that far yet. So typically we'll have a retreat. Um, you know, in the summer months, typically in August, we'll, we'll be looking at putting something together. And, um, and, you know, so look for, in your emails for more information on that.
Uh, I just wanted to make sure that the audio came in clear and there was one other item to share.
I, I, sorry, I can't understand you, Matt. Are we still back in policy? I'm confused.
Can I, I can, I can try to help. I don't know if Matt, I was trying to follow Matt as well. I know that I had spoken with Matt, um, last week and earlier today. And one of the other things I know Matt was going to mention is that at our next meeting, he was going to have the policy committee take a look at, uh, an equity policy that exists, um, locally, shared with us by our friends down at Mill River. And the idea is that as we continue to look at how we go through our policies, how we conduct our business as an organization and a board, we do it with an eye on equity. And, uh, so that would be on the next policy committee agenda Matt was saying.
Okay.
I, I knew he wanted to get that out, but I, it was, it just wasn't coming.
Great, thank you, Rob. Um, Hurley, I saw you had your hand up. I, I'm not sure with all the discussions what it's about.
I just, I just, looking at the retreat, I would ask that we take part of that retreat and maybe even do something jointly, maybe not at that retreat, but as somewhere with the Board of Alderman regarding the taxes and all, and increases on all of that. I'm just throwing that out there. I think we need to become very proactive with the budget constraints that are coming up. Working with the Board of Alderman, trying to figure that out. And I'm not saying invite them, but I think we need to figure something out and brainstorm on that for either retreat or meeting sometime.
Okay. Um, so the next thing on our agenda then is Rutland High School New Neighbors Report. And Joe Anderson has been hanging out with us for the evening. And I believe he and, uh, Greg and, and/or maybe Bill have an update for us on their conversations and plans. So I will turn the floor over to them. Thank you.
I think Joe and Greg are going to take it, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for having me. Um, I know it's kind of late in the agenda, but thank you. Um, so basically what we've talked about with the policy, um, with the policy committee was, um, the addition of a new flagpole, which will serve as a place for student voice specifically on the topic of social justice. Um, and with that, the development of a policy for students to raise the flag, which would go through administration of the school, but be created by the policy committee, obviously, sorry. Um, and then another thing was the raising of the Black Lives Matter flag every February during Black History Month on the new pole, which would be located between the red and the white wing ideally, in the little patio area of the library. Um, and another thing was the creation of a student faculty equity committee in the 2020 to 2021 school year. Um, to work with education of the students, um, on the aspect of social justice. And this would be a district-wide committee. Um, and finally, the installation of a new permanent art installation during the 2020 to 2021 school year, exemplifying the school-wide mission of taking action and social justice. Um, and ideally that would be above the ramp, uh, right in front of the theater. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Joe. Greg?
Just to, to thank you, Joe, you hit all the high points. Thank you. Um, the, uh, the, a couple of things just to add on, uh, we had a good meeting on the 26th, both the, the building and the district administration, along with members of New Neighbor, New Neighbors, Joe included. Um, just a couple of, uh, uh, additional details on some of the points that, that Joe had pointed out. There's, there's an existing equity committee, uh, in the high school that has done work, uh, throughout the current school year. Uh, the idea would be that that committee would continue their work in the coming year. Um, and then also, uh, we would add, uh, student voices to that, to that group of, uh, to that faculty committee. So the change there is to take an, an existing effort and to, uh, include additional, um, faculty work. Uh, excuse me, to include additional student voices to that. Um, also the, the process of developing a, a, um, a procedure. Uh, I've been doing some, some homework and there are other schools that have, uh, procedures where student organizations make the proposal to fly a particular flag for a particular period of time. So the idea would be to develop a procedure and, uh, and to make that happen. Um, also just to, to make folks aware, uh, in our, some existing work that's been done uh, and work that's still upcoming for our GIN conference, the topic was inclusivity. Um, and Bo R. Yang from the Human Rights Commission offered, uh, implicit bias training. Uh, similar to the implicit bias training that she offered to the full school, school board as well. There were similar components there. But that was offered to the full student body. Um, every member of the faculty will complete that same training before the end of this school year, uh, along with a facilitated discussion about that. Um, and I believe Bill is leading the effort for that to take place across the whole district. Uh, so that we can then begin next year, uh, with what we're sort of calling implicit bias 2.0 to kind of take that work to the next level of, okay, so what, what are our ongoing efforts going to be? And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Hurley?
I keep hitting the wrong button. Um, Joe, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, I was the one, because I had a parent, um, had, had a concern that I felt was valid. And she said, I understand that the New Neighbors works with, uh, you know, trying to do inclusiveness and all of that, and they have the Black Lives Matter flag. But what about the LBGTQ community? Why aren't we flying the rainbow flag? Why are, why is this organization, this group only focusing on that? I couldn't answer that for her. Uh, I was the one that requested this report because that was, that came to me by a parent with a concern. Um, you know, she has a daughter apparently, uh, who is in a same-sex relationship and felt that they are getting some of the same things that occurring to those of, uh, different races to her. And so when I went on the line and I went to look, because there are certain, there's clubs online and there was no description of what the New Neighbors group does. And nothing was there. Uh, which is kind of troubling for me because I'm not quite sure what who they're looking at as far as neighbors go. Are we just focusing on the Black Lives Matter issue or are we looking at total inclu, in, you know what I mean? It's been a long day. Um, and, um, how that gets put up. Um, because they said, you know, there are other issues. Um, and I don't know, this woman came to me and she said, well, we, I know there are some refugee families in the, in the city of Rutland. What about their kids? And one of, I got shortly afterwards, I got a phone call from another parent, um, who was of Indian descent and said, my child feels that the focus is on the Black Lives Matter movement. But what about us who are feeling also minimi, minimized too? Hence, I went to the thing and I asked for what the new, what the New Neighbors group does because I don't know that parent about the LBGTQ. I'm aware, I think, that there is a gay straight alliance in the, uh, school, but I don't know if I should send her there. Her child there, I don't know if the child should be sent to the New Neighbors. Or is the New Neighbors just one? Um, one thing that they're looking at, one focus. That's where I need some clarification. And I think that's where, um, that's where my point was coming from. Nothing against the flag, nothing, I, I, I support it a hundred percent. And in fact, I was at, um, the, um, protest on Sunday. But I think there's some other groups out there that are starting to feel a little bit minimized and how we can prevent that from happening.
So I, I think best to answer that would be, you know, Bill or Greg. And I think that's part of the whole point of having another flagpole is to be able um, to, to leverage that and the student voice. But I will, uh, turn that over to Bill or Greg. They both had their hands up. I'll let them shoot it out.
Oh, that's me. Joe, I'll just start quickly. Just history, history of these clubs, Hurley, uh, they, they come and go and, and a lot of them are sometimes started by a student. They might go to a, a teacher and they say, I'd like to start, start a club around one of these topics. So sometimes they last as long as the kid who started it is there. And sometimes they last as long as the advisor who, who has the energy and personality to keep, to keep them alive. We, they, they really do have lifespans. Uh, New Neighbors started as, as an effort to help with the Syrian refugee resettlement. A couple of years ago, that was, uh, actually Greg's daughter and another girl who helped, helped start it. And that was their focus, um, as that, they did, they did a number of things when, when that, when that was around, um, when that kind of, that program got you know, put on halt. We talked about having New Neighbors be something that could be like, there's, there's a club at Burlington High School that is equity and diversity focused. And so that was kind of what they were going to take over. Um, I did talk to the advisor, Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Some of the things that New Neighbors did this year, they worked with, they volunteered with, um, to clean up properties of the, with the Rutland Housing Trust. They organized childcare. They did tours for freshman open house. A fundraiser for Vermont Cares. They did work with Habitat for Humanity. Food baskets for, um, for holiday, holiday food baskets with another club in, in the school. They helped with the Veterans Day Assembly. They helped organize that. They, uh, a benefit fundraiser for Dodge House was supposed to happen, but then COVID hit and then, uh, they were supposed to also present at the GIN conference in three different workshops and then we didn't, we weren't able to do that in person. Well, they also donated money to the hurricane in Puerto Rico. And so there, there's a lot of different things that they did, Joe. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that, but that's kind of how, I, I think it shifts its purpose from time to time. I think your points are valid, Hurley. And I think that's kind of what Greg is talking about and Joe, about trying to develop a process for how we, if we're going to recognize student voice and it has to tie to the curriculum and it has to tie to the vision statement, how do we do that?
And, and, and I'm glad, I'm hearing all that. I'm glad. And how do we get that out there to the community that the New Neighbors is just more than the Black Lives Matter flag? And I think that's part of the issue that this, I was trying to read between the lines that she was really trying to focus on. And I think hearing that, that's wonderful. We need to get that information out there. We need to get, let them know that this is what this club does. And that's, I guess, Joe, I'm going to look at you. You're going to have to go on the radio and everything else because we need to get the, that information out there so that way there's no misconception of what the club is. Thank you very much for that.
Joe, may I?
Yes, Greg.
Well, Joe, and I want to, Joe, give you the opportunity. Did you want to add something to that?
Um, Mr. Olson basically covered it, but what I was going to say was that the develop, the development for the new flagpole would kind of be where people would be able to voice their opinions on other aspects. And there's only so much that New Neighbors can do at one time. And we do try to include everybody, but it's hard to do everything. And like Mr. Olson said, we do a lot of stuff with local organizations and like Habitat for Humanity. We did a big garage sale where we made quite a bit of money, um, to donate. So there's really no clear cut answer on why those aren't included, except that we don't really have as much time to do everything. And I'm sure in the future they will be. But it's just development, developing as it goes.
I, I think, Joe, that's wonderful. And don't sell yourself short. You've done a lot. It's maybe us as a board and administration need to get the word out there of what you're doing. Because I think that's what's the critical, that's what's missing here. How we can get the word out that this is what you guys are doing. And thank you for all you do.
I would again, you know, as board, as Charlene mentioned before, kind of board communications, there are protocols. If these questions come to you as an individual board member, it's best to always refer them back to the building administration. They can answer them more timely and more thoroughly than, than we can as, as we suspect or as we collect information. Um, so, Ed, sorry, Greg, you're on.
Thank you. I, I'll be, I'll be brief. And I, again, I, the, you know, uh, Isabel LaFamina is a member of the Amnesty International Club. Uh, there's a key club. There's a Make-A-Wish Foundation Club. So there are stu, you know, uh, Green Mountain Teen Institute is a, is a teen leadership organization. So there are organizations all throughout the school that are doing all kinds of really great stuff. Um, I think that exactly to your point, Hurley, I think what we see with a flag, you know, what is, what is a flag? It's a really public symbol. Um, it's, it's elevated. It's conveying a certain message. Um, and that message certainly has value. So I think part of the desire to have a, a flagpole that is really built around the idea or built on the, the foundation of student or built on the, the foundation of student voice is for those co-curricular activities to have an opportunity to say, hey, we also want to raise and, you know, raise a flag and make this really prominent statement about this particular topic. And, and you're right, in terms of social justice, there's no end to the number of work, the amount of work and the number of, of causes that students and the school can get behind. We've been encouraging them to take action. This is what that looks like. You know, this, the idea of a permanent flagpole built on that foundation of student voice is actually in the interest of doing just precisely that.
Great. Thank you, Greg. So if I may, in the, a lot has changed in the world or a lot more awareness has been brought to some of the injustice in the world since the New Neighbors and administration met that, what, Tuesday after Memorial Day? So I, I guess, has there been any further discussion or any consensus between the club and the high school administration as to the status on the flag? And, you know, while it awaits for the new flagpole?
Joe, are you, I can, did you say already what we were looking to do? Or you did, didn't you?
As in every February?
Yeah, well, we got, that, that's something we were aiming for. But I think, you know, given that, that we have, you know, it's a big national event and it's something that we think should be acknowledged. And we were wondering if we could keep the, the flag on the pole as it is now until we can get the other, the other flagpole set up, which I don't know how long that would take. We have to, we'd have to order that, install it. And then maybe the BLM flag could be the first flag up there. And then we'd have a process ready to go for, for the fall to go through, you know, recognize other, other groups and other interests. So we're, we're basically saying, we're suggesting, we, we'd like to keep the flag up there for now until we can get that other pole up.
I would like to make a motion to keep the flag up there, especially with whatever things going on. And I would like to have the administration and the New Neighbors Club come back to us in August, September with their plan and possibly other organizations who would like to fly their flag for that month. That was the motion.
Can you repeat that?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that because of the national events, the flag remains flown, that we would, that the administration and the New Neighbors Group come to us in Sept, August, September, not August, but September meeting to let us know what the plan is with the new flagpole and other groups and their schedule of flying other flags too. That's all. I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. So any discussion? Joanne?
I guess I don't understand. I, I was under the impression that they had just told us, I guess I'm looking for clarification, that they were going to come up with a procedure for flags and student voice. And so I, I don't, I guess I don't know that we need a motion because the administration has made that decision already.
That's true. That's true.
So I, I guess, can, can I ask a follow-up, Allison?
Yes.
I guess right now, though, the flag isn't coming down. Right now, which is what I keep hearing from the public, which I, I don't know why they think that. But is that true? That's the question I wanted to ask.
So I'll, I'll leave the clarification to Greg as he's been working with the New Neighbors Club and will be overseeing the flagpole and the clubs and, and the high school. So Greg?
So I, I think the clarification is, when we met, we developed a procedure to put up a new flagpole, have a, or, or, and then, or develop the, the, the plan to put up a flagpole, develop a procedure, et cetera, et cetera. The, I, I think what's necessary is, you know, we, we serve at the pleasure of the board. The board has made a motion and taken a vote to have the flag up for a certain period of time. Really what we need is the board's permission to leave it up beyond the motion that was made previously. So the suggestion that Bill made is, I support it as well. I think, I think that there's not a new flagpole right now, but there was a specific board motion that said, for this number of days and now for this month, and then that's over. So sort of built into that is the statement, okay, and then it comes down. So really, I think what we're sort of saying is, in order for us administratively to keep that there, we kind of need the board's permission to say, yes, this is an administrative decision. And the, the flag, you know, the board motion has kind of expired. It's now in the administration's hands for that to stay there. And then a new flagpole goes up, that would be the first one. And then we would begin the process of working with student organizations.
And I, and, and Greg, I think that's what I was trying to ensure.
Hurley, can you, there's other people waiting to have the floor. Aaron?
I was just clarifying my motion, Allison.
Aaron?
So, I think Greg really stated that we need a motion. And I think, I don't know if we want to rephrase the motion, but for simplistic purposes, we leave the flag up until these, you know, consensus of the school year. And then with the procedure, knowing administration will come back to us by, say, September 30th with a plan and procedure. And I think there's a lot more discussion that has to be done, but happy to, to push the motion. I think Greg is following great protocol, knowing we're turning it back over to them.
Anne?
Hi, thanks. To me, I'm hearing a policy is the board's responsibility. Procedure is an administration process. And I'm hearing kind of a confluence of two different things. I, I, it would make sense to me in my head if there was a motion to leave the flag up until, I think what you're saying, until the flag, the additional flagpole issue is all solved. And then let, and that's the motion. After that, we let the administration handle things. I would be interested in seconding a motion to leave the flag up now. Thanks.
So I think Aaron has kind of offered amendments, Anne has offered, Hurley made the original motion. Hurley, back to you.
I would amend my motion to follow along with both Aaron and Anne, that the flag stay up until the administration works through and takes over the flagpole. However you want me to word it, I'll word it. And I think that's all I was trying to say. I see Bill laughing. Yeah, that's, that's it. I just don't think it should be coming down right now. Yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Anne's got the second for that. Okay. Any other discussion? I don't, I haven't looked. Joanne, do we have anything coming through the Q and A?
There was a person, but I believe I answered her question. And I think she's satisfied. I think she's been listening to our discussion and her question, she just wanted to make sure that the flag wasn't coming down, you know, imminently.
Okay.
She understands. If she doesn't, please type another question. Dina?
So any, any other?
Oh, thank you, Dina.
Questions or comments from the board or from the public? Okay. So, so the motion on the floor is to, oh, now I have to reword how, Hurley didn't quite have it worded either. So to keep the Black Lives flag flying on the current flagpole and until a new flagpole is installed, at which time the high school administration will take over the oversight of the flagpole and work with the school clubs and students, to use that for student voice.
That's exactly what I said, Allison.
Perfect. Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. So any other old business to come before the board? And any new business? Hurley?
I, and not, it's not new business, but it may be potential new business. I think we should reserve the, the option of having on what the state is on in final property tax rates. And I think we potentially need to have that meeting. And I think you and Joanne, along with the CFO and Bill, should let us know if you do meet together because I'm hearing lots of stories coming from out there. I got three different emails today from legislatures. I just want to make sure that if we need to have a meeting budget-wise, that we have it. That's all. So it's really not new business per se.
Okay. I, I missed, like, it cut out in the beginning of what you were saying. Did you get the gist of it, Joanne? Joanne had her hand up.
Yeah, Hurley, we will be addressing that at the Finance Committee meeting. And I think next week I have to look. And we'll make sure.
Okay. Thank you.
You and I have talked about that. So we'll be on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So then that completes our regular business meeting information for tonight. And I believe we have the need for an executive session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss employment of a public officer. The premature public knowledge would put the schools and the person involved at a substantial disadvantage.
And is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. All right. So I think, Joanne, right before the meeting started, you sent a link to everyone for the executive session?
Yes, I did. And I believe we invited Pam Reed, correct? And I believe Bill and Rob, and then all the school board members. So everyone should have that invitation in their email.
So, so the motion to go into executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries and we will go into executive session. Thank you.